Good evening, I would like to call our city council meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2019 to order. At this time, for a moment of silence, I just wanted to note, this morning, our Assistant City Administrator and CFO and I were at Fillmore School, and it's another one of those great events where you see families come and join their kids for breakfast, and people from throughout the community came and provided support. It was really, as we head into the holiday season, it was really a heartwarming opportunity for people to get a chance to show that the kids get loved by a lot of different people and a lot of different situations. Some didn't have parents that came with them, but there was plenty to provide love and support to those kids, and I think that's our responsibility in the community to do the same thing, no matter what socioeconomic group, no matter where you live, to make sure that we also find ways to provide support and love to all the people in our community. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose, Condon, Rossen, Dickman, Tompkins, Gripp, McGinnis, Clul, Mattson, and Dunn. Ten present, your honor.
Thank you, Brian, and again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as our city council meetings are recorded and available on the Davenport City website. We are happy you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end, and when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you for being here. Will then Alderman move the approval of the city council meeting minutes for November 13th? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Those minutes have been approved. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a reminder that city facilities will be closed Thursday and Friday in recognition of the Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. Will then Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for November 20th? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Those are approved. There we go, sorry. We have six appointments this evening, and we'll read all of them. The Appointments Design Review Board, Danielle Cavapal is a reappointment, Tagan Trees is a new appointment, in the Civil Rights Commission, Ruby Mateos is a reappointment, Janel Swanberg is a new appointment, Henry Karp is a new appointment, and Richard Bakora is a new appointment. Can I have a motion for approval? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair that you put these new appointments up this late in your term with Alderman-elect Mike Mattson going to take over. This has been one of the more controversial issues since you've been our mayor, and I just think it'd be fair that Alderman Mattson, Mayor-elect, would have the opportunity to address this issue when he became mayor, so I do oppose.
Thank you for your point of reference. Just so you know, by ordinance, this was the process to follow by ordinance, which I did, and their terms expire at the end of November, so to follow the ordinance, this is the process that should be followed, and I did. So with that, there's some proclamations this evening. Our first one is end veterans homelessness, no, then the meeting, please. It's ending veterans homelessness, and Alderman Mattson will read that proclamation.
Thank you, mayor. Proclamation, whereas since the humble beginnings of our independence, courageous Americans have stepped forward to protect this country and promote our ideals. The liberty that U.S. citizens enjoy comes at a paid price by these valiant men and women. And whereas the greater Quad Cities communities of Davenport, Bettendorf, Rock Island, Moline, and East Moline have among its citizens volunteers and employees individuals who have served in the United States Armed Forces, and whereas we are reminded of our obligation to them to serve our veterans as they have gallantly served us, and as we gather here today, let us not forget that freedom is never free, and our nation and our community is ever more indebted for their courageous service. And whereas we understand that there are veterans in the Quad Cities that are at risk of or are currently experiencing homelessness, and whereas we know that veteran homelessness is a community-wide concern and requires a community response by committing to a common vision, bringing resources to the table, and helping to drive continued progress through collaboration and communication. And now therefore we, Frank Klipsch, mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, along with our fellow Quad Cities communities Bettendorf, Rock Island, Moline, and East Moline, do hereby proclaim our commitment to joining the mayor's challenge to end veterans homelessness and encourage the citizens of Davenport and the greater Quad Cities to likewise commit to a shared vision of ending veterans homelessness, dated this 26th day of November 2019. I move the proclamation.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Alderman Mattson, would you please make the presentation?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and accepting is Allison Hannah and Karen Aberdorff from the VA Community Resource and Referral Center, whose job is to help find veterans homes and end veteran homelessness. So I'd be honored to present if you guys want to meet up there, and I'll ask my fellow veteran colleague, Richard Clul, as one of his last moments to join me doing this, so...
So on behalf of the mayor and the Davenport City Council and all the citizens of Davenport, we thank you very much for your work, and this is such an important thing, the people that have worked hard to give us the freedom that we deserve, you're doing the work to help end veteran homelessness, and we thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much, we're very honored that the city of Davenport has taken this as a very serious matter. Humility Homes and Services is one of our community partners that's very involved in Davenport, and we want to thank you for helping all of our veterans ensure that they have a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two presentations this evening. Our first of our local business recognitions is the following. It has been documented that the tradition of glass fabrication in Davenport goes back to at least 1901. Mid-American Glass became an independent glass and metal fabricator in July 1, 1987, when co-founders Lou and Joyce Maggiar purchased the branch operation from PPG Industries. Daughter Michelle Maggiar joined the company after graduating from the University of Iowa in January of 1988. Michelle was named president of the company in 2012. Mid-American Glass is an independent fabricator of glass and metal products for the residential and commercial glazing industry. Mid-American Glass customers range from local glass shops to regional commercial glazing companies, as well as national players in the office furniture market. Mid-American Glass distributes within a 200-mile radius of the Quad Cities, and in 2014, Mid-American Glass invested $6.5 million to build a new 30,000-square-foot production facility and office space at 1545 Rockingham Road. Mid-American Glass employs 60 individuals. Thank you to the Maggiar family and Mid-American Glass for more than 32 years of dedicated service, for their devotion to assisting the city of Davenport in building our unique community, and for their continued contributions to the economic development and quality of life in Davenport. Mid-American Glass is another wonderful example of Davenport's local businesses that are the foundation of community. Accepting their recognition tonight will be Michelle Maggiar, the president, Roy Sandercock, the 25-year employee, Lois Wallerob, another 25-year employee, and Carol Moritz, one other of their great consistent employees. So if you want to join me at the podium, please.
Quite enough recognition, thank you.
And it reads, "Local Business, the Foundation of Our Community, Recognizing the Unique Businesses of Davenport, Iowa, November 2019, Mid-American Glass."
Thank you so much, mayor.
Thank you very, very much, and like we said, we've been here for 32 years, but a glass fabrication facility's been down there, crossing the city cemetery since before 1901. I also want to make sure that I thank the city of Davenport for the partnership. Our investment of $6.5 million in the West End of Davenport wouldn't have been possible without the help of your Economic Development Department, and a little bit of help from Public Works with the flooding. So thank you so very, very much for the recognition.
Our second local business recognition tonight goes to Babe's Termite and Pest Control, opened for business in March of 1995. Babe and his son have, the Babe's Termite and Pest Control is locally owned and operated and family business specializing in termite, insect, snake, and rodent removal services. Thank God for that. Babe serves the Quad City metro and surrounding areas. In 2019, Babe's moved from their original location on Rockingham Road to their new location at 2147 West Locust Street. Babe's Termite and Pest Control has had the honor to have been voted one of the area's top-two pest control companies for the past three years. In addition, they have been voted as Quad City Times Reader's Choice and maintain an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau. Babe's Termite and Pest Control employees, six individuals, and prides themselves on delivering reliable pest services, excellent service, and free estimates. Thank you to their Aguelo family and Babe's Termite and Pest Control for more than 24 years of distinct and dedicated customer service, for their commitment to assisting the city of Davenport in building our unique community, and for their continued contributions to the economic development and quality of life in Davenport, Iowa. Babe's Termite and Pest Control is another wonderful example of Davenport's local business that truly are the foundation of our community. So we'd like to have Rick, Michelle, who is Mrs. Aguelo, and Babe come on up for the presentation. the Unique Businesses of Davenport, Iowa, Babe's Termite and Pest Control, November 2019." Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Just want to thank the community for supporting us all these years, it's been a pleasure serving everybody, it really has, we really enjoy what we do.
Great, we'll next move on to petitions and communications from our council members and myself. Alderman McGinnis, as our Chair of Community Engagement, will start the process.
Thank you, your honor. A few things tonight. First of all, this week marks the beginning of two Davenport traditions, and these will start on Saturday. First, the Fejuary Holiday Lights presents interactive light displays nightly from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. Their interactive 15-minute shows, Time to Music, and this celebration runs through January 4th. And then also on Saturday began the Van De Ver's Annual Celebration of Poinsettias and Lights. This year's theme is the Yule Ball, and that event will run through January 12th, so please try to get out and enjoy this with your friends and family. Here's something not in Davenport but significant to our area. The REAP program is a state-of-Iowa program operated by the Department of Natural Resources that supports the enhancement and protection of the state's natural and cultural resources. They hold REAP assemblies across the state at this time of the year to talk about the program, what it funds, and to listen to ideas from local residents. There's no REAP assembly in this year in Davenport, but there will be one nearby in Muscatine, and that's on December 4th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Environmental Learning Center at 3300 Cedar Street, again, in Muscatine. And also a reminder that the Census is still looking for workers for temporary, part, and full-time work. The hours are flexible, they have not been able to hire as many people in the Quad Cities as they would like, so here's the kicker, the wage per hour has gone from $15 an hour to $20 an hour. So don't hold out much longer, because I think they're only going to be hiring through January, but if you know anybody who's interested in part or full-time temporary work, they can go to www.2020census.gov and click on the Jobs tab to find out more. It's apparently very easy to apply. And then one other thing, our third ward meeting will be Sunday, December 8th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Antoine Leclerc House, 630 East Sixth Street, and our special guest will be Mayor-elect Mike Mattson, so please come out and say hello to Mike, and we'll have time for Q and A, as we always do. So feel free to join us on December 8th. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to share that I will have my last ward meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, December 2nd, 6:30 at K-Site, and it's kind of an eighth ward appreciation to thank everybody for their support over the past six years, and also to introduce the new Alderman, Judith Lee. So again, this is open to everybody, you don't have to live in my ward, and hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Clul?
Thank you, mayor, I just wanted to add a little supplemental information to the Fejuary lighting ceremony. Aubrey Call is the person that the city's working with to set up this light show. Aubrey was a student school board member probably about six or seven years ago now, and you may have seen in the paper over the years, the Call family has had a lighting event in their yard over the last eight or nine years with the syncopated lights and everything, and Aubrey and her brother grew up with this, and I thought it was just interesting that Aubrey is now going into this as a business. It's really kind of a homegrown business here in Davenport. I don't know how wide she's going, but it's certainly going to be an event that's worth seeing, so check it out.
Thank you, Alderman Clul, and thank you to, again, this has been something Alderman Ambrose has been stressing for a number of years, so thank you for your consistency on that important process, and something good for our West End. Anybody else seeing no one else? We have individual items on the discussion agenda. First is a third consideration for ordinance case number ROD 19-03, being the request of the city of Davenport to reduce the maximum building height in portions of the CE Elmore Corners zoning district from 120 feet to 55 feet. This is in the 6th Ward. Is there any public with comment on this issue? Please come up, name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Dennis DiRicchi, I reside in the Jersey Farm subdivision at 6494 Fairhaven Road. Again, I would like to appreciate your consideration on approving ordinance 1903 that was unanimously passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to honor the original agreed-upon compromise height from ord. 1401. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Dale Gilmore, I'm a resident of the 6th Ward, and I approve this message. I'd like to make three points tonight, I'd also like to address this issue from a slightly different perspective. First point, remember just a few months ago, a gentleman came before you requesting permission to tear down and rebuild a larger facility at the corner of 46th and Pine? Numerous adjacent neighbors complained that a new, larger facility was not conducive to their neighborhood. It wasn't a fit. He was denied permission. Remember quite a few months prior to that, there was an organization that opened a facility to feed homeless and the hungry on Washington Street. Again, numerous neighbors complained that this facility was not a fit for their neighborhood. The facility was closed. One more, remember back when a trucking company wanted to use the old K's merchandise facility for a warehouse? Again, numerous neighbors complained that a trucking warehouse was not a fit for their neighborhood. The trucking company's request was denied. I believe this is again the time to side with the surrounding neighbors and support the passage of this ordinance. Now the second point, some have called for a compromise. Let's review the facts. Surrounding neighbors were promised just a few years ago that a 50-foot limit would be enforced in the area immediately adjacent to their neighborhood. Now that number's been increased to 55 feet. As you all know, a variance of 10% is allowed, making the new height over 60 feet. So neighbors are willing to allow more than a 20% increase in height over what they were promised. In my opinion, that's a generous compromise. If a builder wishes to erect 120-foot building, they may, it will just have to be across the street. Third point, the petitioner of this ordinance is the city of Davenport. It comes from planning and zoning, it passed by a unanimous vote. Do you believe they are aware of the circumstances surrounding this issue? Do you really intend to micromanage every issue a department brings to you? It's time to trust the opinion of the staff and vote for this ordinance. So in summary, 120-foot or 80-foot buildings are not a fit for this immediate neighborhood. The neighbors are already offering more than a 20% compromise for additional height, and staff brings this to you by way of a unanimous vote. In my opinion, this vote should be obvious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this issue?
Hello, I'm Peter Rink, I'd like to support what's been said already, to stick with the 55 feet and not go to what's being discussed, certainly not 120 feet or 80 feet. You know, I know these are difficult decisions, who do we please, homeowners, business? If we look at Elmore, Elmore has a curve near 46th Street, and that was when the city was supporting homeowners, that there was a buffer between those homes to the west, and maybe some of you can speak to this, and that was curved further, and it's worked out, there's been great businesses along through there, there's been a hotel that's there, the J-Bar Hotel, and that is a six-story hotel, and it's across the street at Elmore, and I think that model is a great model. So we think there should be a buffer between a residential area and where there's going to be tall buildings, so I would support what's already been stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rusty Hunter-Zuber, a resident of the 6th Ward. As I would like to speak in context of a bigger picture, which this is very relevant to also, and as I was thinking about my remarks tonight, I was thinking of a couple of quotes that seem to be relevant for me standing here. One was, a lot of people attribute the great scientist and physicist Albert Einstein, with the definition of insanity, is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. I also thought of the wise philosopher Yogi Berra, and he said, "It's like deja vu all over again." Whichever is applicable, I'm addressing this council for the sixth time in 18 months with the same question. Why do the residents of Davenport have to pay for a developer's unsubstantiated claims of economic distress? In all five of the prior cases, the developer submitted an unsubstantiated claim that the desired development was not economically feasible, without relief from the zoning ordinances. Three of the five cases were requests after there were prior agreements and compromises to hopefully preclude future changes. A similar situation exists with this request. In all of these prior situations, including this one, I should say in all the situations, the public never saw any fact-based data to support the claim of unfeasible economics. Yet, in the five cases before, the leadership accepted those claims without question and moved the request forward. Given the lack of any factual information, there is only one assumption I can make. The assumption is that the landowner has set an unrealistic expectation on the value of the land. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right. There's also the argument that the residents should have noted this during the development and vetting of the zoning ordinance revision. With respect to that argument, I offer these three points. How many of us can honestly state that we understood all of the implications and nuances of the proposed revised zoning ordinance as we were developing and vetting it? How many times during the development, vetting, and approval were there statements that while this ordinance was much better than where we were, we knew it was not perfect? How many times during the process were adjustments made when issues and concerns were noted? So why should we not entertain this same flexibility to address the inequality just because it was after the adoption? In any case, this evening, city leadership has an opportunity to do what is right for the residents. Hopefully you will rise to the occasion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Joe Slavens, Forewood View Way, Davenport, Iowa. I think this is my sixth time to talk, so I'll try and take a slightly different approach. I think where we've arrived through several meetings here, as well as several meetings hosted by Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Clul, is discussion of two possible outcomes. One is that we have the modification as presented by staff and is unanimously recommended by planning and zoning for the entire area that's east, excuse me, west and south of Elmore, to have a 55-foot limitation. The other outcome, and I'm projecting now that is being, that I think's been discussed, is the possibility that one 15-acre parcel receive a different zoning, that that would have an 80-foot height. To my knowledge, there's been no discussion of anything other than that parcel receiving a different outcome, that is, the 55 feet that's been recommended. To my knowledge, no other landowner that owns land within the area that's being under discussion, other than one, has come before this council or come to any meeting with anyone requesting anything different than the 55-foot limitation. So those are the two, as I understand it, probably where we're going to end up this evening in a discussion. The prior speakers have talked about other projects that this council has looked at. I think the biggest challenge that we're confronted with this evening and throughout this process is that we don't even have a project. We are starting, and we're doing zoning here for something, and we don't even, we don't have a site plan, we don't know a use, we don't have any information regarding the location of where something would be located on these lots. There have been pictures, which Alderman Rossen recommended, and I think they were helpful to some extent, but I would suggest to you that they have limited use, the foliage is inaccurate, because you know, you can't, I mean, it would be ridiculous to go out and get more foliage. There are other buildings on the site, so when you look at the views, when they're put in there, there's an expectation that the design review board or the site plan would have a 55-foot-ish building placed between an 80-foot building and the rest. We have no requirement that that take place, we don't even have a plan that we're looking at with respect to that. The other comment that gives me great concern is there's been discussion- The other comment that gives me great concern is there's been discussion of uses of this property that are not even recommended uses, in fact, they are recommended against with respect to this property. The recommended uses within, in the plan are suggested to be retail. I'm not aware of a retail development that requires more than 55 feet, suggesting that if we had a different use that required a different height, that would be appropriate both from a use standpoint and from a zoning standpoint to request a variance from the requirements in the plan. Particularly if you do look at those in your, if you have the views, the one that gives me greatest pause is view one, and that's the one where it, that is immediately west of this property where there's 64 houses that are proposed to be built. And as I've indicated earlier, there's a deed restriction that does not permit any of those homeowners to come forth and discuss with you their concerns if they are, otherwise they're subject to a cease and desist order from the owners of that property. The topography doesn't justify a change, this is one of the highest spots. It would be ridiculous to go from a 50-foot to an 80-foot and back down to a 55-foot variant, or height. The suggestion of an amendment is only being brought forth because of one objector to this. I would suggest to you that this is spot zoning. Spot zoning, according to the Iowa State Extension Office, is when a rezoning decision results in a single parcel or small island of property with restrictions on its use different from those imposed on the surrounding property. Spot zoning can be valid if there is a reasonable basis to treat the spot-zoned property different from the surrounding property. However, zoning is not appropriate if it is for the financial benefit of the individual property and detrimental to the surrounding area. I think that's what we've discussed, is the only basis upon such an amendment would be to create a financial benefit of one property owner to the detriment, as you've heard testimony or statements by all the other neighbors. According to Iowa courts, the primary factor of importance is whether the rezon tract has a peculiar adaptability to the new classification as compared to the surrounding property. Again, neither a hardship is demonstrated, nor has there been any evidence or facts brought forth that says that this property is peculiar in its nature. In fact, if you go and walk the property, it's peculiarly high. Spot zoning for the sole benefit of the landowner and is contrary to the, to a comprehensive plan is unreasonable. We've been asked to make a compromise. I would suggest you compromise between 120 and 55 is an unreasonable request. A compromise is a negotiated settlement, if you will, a number that's somewhere between two reasonable starting points. 120, we all agree, is not a reasonable starting point. Let me conclude by saying, when we talk about splitting the baby, splitting a baby, number one, requires you to have two reasonable points. But when it was all said and done, you know what? Solomon never split the baby. He had the mother step forth and say, "This is my child and I want to have that child live." I would ask you to make the right decision and not to simply compromise by splitting the baby. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Tom Jacobson, I'm a resident of the 6th Ward, 6436 Woodland Court and in the Jersey Farms subdivision. The ordinance under consideration here, I wish you'd mind about is, reducing height from 120 to 55 feet actually affects three neighborhoods, not just one neighborhood. So there are three separate neighborhoods, that's in play here. And compromises have been in play here as well over, oh, the last five years or more. Back at the time when we built our house and many of the residents built their houses, the area adjacent to Jersey Farms and the area we're talking about was actually residential and that was what was targeted to be residential at that particular time. Now, things have changed. I mean, situations changed by the time of the casino time, it was kind of recognized that that was going to be a commercial area and that probably made sense for the greater good of the community and, and, and we, we accepted that, that change. And had asked for some consideration for some protections in the immediate adjacent area for some limitations on height, which came in the resolution approving the casino. And actually to the east for the PDD, which actually gave an approval for a site plan with the presentation being that, that would give an approval process that nothing really, really out of control would go in that particular area because it would have to go through an individual site plan improvement. So this is not an anti-development or not in my backyard position. In fact, in February of 2005, I went before the Planning and Zoning Commission myself to actually speak in support of the Mills project. The difference there was, is that we actually worked with this from the very beginning on what they were going to do and how they were going to do it, and we supported that effort to do that. And the reason that we did not protest this 120-foot zoning before it got passed is we simply didn't know it was in there. You know, we thought we were staying in touch, but we didn't. By the fourth quarter, when, when zoning changed, we'd, we'd missed it. And P&amp;Z has sought to correct that by unanimous decision and approving the zoning change. Now, this ordinance, if passed, it still doesn't quite provide the same protection that was once there with, with the PDD zoning. There is no longer, you know, public meetings, there's no P&amp;Z review, there's no other council meetings on this action. I had a recent example of that this morning, as I was driving down Elmore, about 7:30 this morning, there's a sign there on Elmore, just south of Mills that says, "The, you know, welcome, the new Aqua Tech car wash is coming soon." Apparently that's our new communication process of what we're, no one's going to Elmore Corners when I see the sign out there on the road. This ordinance does make the zoning more consistent with the Elmore Corners design guidelines. Building heights of three to four stories, it specifically does not recommend things such as hotels in that particular area. And it does provide transitional zoning from the residential to the commercial area for these neighborhoods. And it's more consistent with the previous commitments. You know, it's a statement I gotten again from the, from the zoning consultant, that, that good zoning plans and processes will provide existing property owners a reasonable expectation of future development in adjacent developed, developed properties. And our expectations again for us was that at one point we thought it was residential, we recognized that it needed to change with changing times to commercial, but at least there'd be some buffer protection for the neighborhood in that process. And so we hope that this ordinance would reinstate a good portion of that protection for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Storm and I have resided in the 6th Ward for 29 years. I am a recent homeowner in Jersey Farms, having purchased a home on Woodland Court in October of 2018. This is the northwestern area of Jersey Farms. I would like to address the city council regarding the noise in this area due to commercial development, especially the Call Home. The Call Home is 55 feet and it sits on land higher than the lots closest to Veterans Memorial Parkway, and that would be on the north side of the Jersey Farms development. Its HVAC unit sits on top of the roof and faces Veterans Memorial Parkway. Depending upon the direction of the wind, one can hear this pronounced dieseling noise one to two blocks inside the Jersey Farms development. This noise is loudest along 65th Street and Lorton Court. The Call Home is located approximately three blocks from my home. I cannot see it from inside my house, but I can definitely hear it at night. From inside our house at night, it sounds like a semi-truck is dieseling in our backyard. Heavy drapes now block out the noise in our bedroom. I am concerned about commercial development within Elmore Corners that would be higher than the 55 feet originally designated for this area three-plus years ago. Elmore sits higher than most of the residential properties in Jersey Farms. Typically, HVAC units are mounted on the top of commercial buildings. The taller the building, the bigger the unit and the farther the noise travels. If future development on the parcel of land in question is allowed to be 120 feet, noise from HVAC units could really be a source of significant noise pollution for current and future homeowners. I urge you to vote yes and approve ordinance 19-03, which reduces the maximum height of buildings from 120 feet to 55 feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council. My name is Candy Pasternak. I'm a resident of the 6th Ward and a business owner and practitioner in the 3rd Ward. I'm here again this evening and first and foremost, want to thank you all for your time and your learned consideration of what's before you. We have a situation that first and foremost, there is existing zoning in this property. This is a change to the existing owning, a zoning. So in our situation, we, we have zoning that exists in the Elmore Corners overlay district that has the height limitation of 120. We were not party to or part of the communications with the Jersey Farms neighbors when the 50-foot limit was discussed or promised. And the VTS Farm Parcel A property, which is at the very southern end of the Elmore Corners overlay district, is not adjacent to any current neighborhoods. We understand the discussions that have taken place in the past. I think council understands our arguments and our position. To further our position, obviously we are objecting to a restriction clear down to 55 feet. We are still willing to compromise. We have not ever suggested that we have to have 120 feet, but at the same time, we don't oppose the current existing zoning. And if we had known that the current existing zoning was at risk of being changed to this height limitation, this council is fully aware of the fact that I represented another party in opting out of the Elmore Corners overlay district. And had VTS Farm Parcel A property owners realized that there was a risk of the zoning that was being passed at that time, perhaps they would have opted out as well. Again, I'm going to thank you for your time and attention in the past, but tonight I'm going to bring up some new things. I was not supposed to be here tonight. I wasn't misrepresenting anything last time when I spoke. Mother Nature had other plans for us. We were in Managua this morning, but it's calling for 12.5 inches of snow and then snow Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so we didn't know if we'd make it back. So I'm not going to waste any more of my five minutes, but I'm here because of Mother Nature and frankly, this is pretty important. So while I was gone, council afforded an opportunity to meet again and participants took place in that meeting yesterday afternoon. I was not present, but one of the participants was Mr. Jaeger, who has been before you in the past on behalf of our firm. And there have been pictures presented to you this evening to sort of provide you another avenue of reviewing what's going on. So the first two pictures that you have were taken by the owners of VTS Farm Parcel A. The first one shows the distance from the Forest Road Estates properties, the Woodview Way properties. Two of the residents spoke this evening. The distance is 1,500 from one residence and 1,063 from the other. So those are three football fields away from this property. And then you talk about the other Jersey Farms neighbors who are further north than this, so they're even more than that distance away from our property. Then the second picker, picture in your first grouping of two pictures is the parcel that we're talking about now. And everybody has talked to you about the topography. You may recall that we talked about the fact that the pole lines were put in deep enough because we knew for development to take place on this parcel, we would need to cut and fill. So the plan is to cut this a good 20 to 30 feet to a lower level so that in terms of the arguments and the concerns about this topography and then, you know, additional building on top of that, it's going to be the level of Elmore when it gets developed and it's going to be extended throughout that parcel. Again, it's a 15-plus acre parcel. Then in attempting to provide examples of what various different buildings and of different heights and how they affect and impact the neighbors around them. We don't have a lot of tall buildings. Again, we're not looking at a 120-foot building, but pictures were taken in my absence of, and these are in the last groupings of the pictures. You'll see the Northwest Bank Tower, that's taken at the very north edge of the parking lot of North Park Mall along the fence line where residents are right behind it. Might I briefly finish and explain the pictures, Your Honor?
If they, quickly, please.
Thank you. The others, there are neighbors around the hospital that is also of a height, those neighbors, as well as the Village Co-op on Crow Creek. Coventry is a Davenport address and then Crow Creek is a Bettendorf address. Those homes have increased in value over the last five years, even with that building there. The neighbors in those neighborhoods take as much pride in their property as any other neighborhood in the city of Davenport. Again, height is not the enemy, it's a factor that has to be considered. And in the Elmore Corners overlay district, the plan, built-in protections, beginning at page 26 of the plan, where there's building design requirements and restrictions that will be followed or implemented by the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Bill Storm. I'm a 29-year resident of the 6th Ward. And I'd like to just go through the timeline one more time, because I know we've gone through this a million times, but I think it's important. Because in 2014, there was extensive discussion with all stakeholders, including the owners of these properties, and the maximum height was set to 50, okay? Everybody was on board for that. Everybody knew what that was. And as far as I know, we were all in agreement at that point in time. In 2017, the Elmore Corners Plan was presented and that reinforced that usage. In 2019, as a result of a complete rewrite of the zoning, the height was mistakenly changed to 120 feet, mistakenly changed. This change was not a result of any rational plan or rational reason. It was not a result of a well-thought-out plan from an investor for development. It was simply an error, a mistake. We are asking today that you fix that mistake and go and support the 55 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's a move, a motion and a second. Any discussion by any of the Aldermen? Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure who can answer this question, but I just wanted to clarify because there seems to be some questions in regards to, I'm curious if the current clients were a part of that conversation from before. You're shaking your head, no. So I just wanted to clarify that. So when that conversation took place in regards to a compromise, it appears that they were not a part of that conversation. So, okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, yeah, I want to thank all the neighbors on both sides of this issue. You know, they got to know all the years, most, most of the people in the neighborhood. You know, we have an area that's zoned at 120 feet and a family that's been on the property for 75 years. Now, this is a opportunity for them. You know, it presents concerns to the neighbors and whether I agree or disagree, I appreciate the fact that you come down and share your perspective. I offered to an amendment and I asked our city attorney to put one together on behalf of the people that own the 15 acres and at the end, I'd like the opportunity to offer this amendment. We have, we have further discussion now, Your Honor. If not, I'll offer the amendment.
Okay, let's go the rest of the questions first and we'll go from there. Alderman Clul.
Thank you. I, Alderman Ambrose, I'd just like the gist of what it is that your amendment will be.
To amend the proposed ordinance to raise the height limit to 73 feet for parcel Y-0801.02A owned by VTS Farms Parcel. I picked 73 feet because 10% of the variance can be administrated granted, so that'll give you 80 feet. That's the amendment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, first of all, I have, I have to say that I appreciate the articulate nature of people from the 6th Ward and that includes Attorney Pasternak. Over the last eight weeks, we've all had a chance to talk about this issue. We've also had three neighborhood meetings with the residents and the attorney and her clients. Clients are very good people. I've had the opportunity to spend some time with them in their home and certainly appreciate their position in this. And I, I just want to start out saying at the very beginning that I think we all understand that we're imposing a limitation on you as sellers because the proposed height, the current amendment at 55 foot, 55 feet, will certainly reduce the number of people who are interested in your property. So we certainly understand that hardship at the very beginning and, and, and we need to take that into consideration in the entire gestalt of, of what we're doing here this evening. This being the time when we're going to make a decision, one way or another, where we go. go towards the future. So I know a lot has been said. We've talked a lot. We've pardoned ourselves for being repetitious. So I just want to say a few words. First of all, Alderman Ambrose, I know that you've said in the last couple of meetings that you wish that folks in the 4th Ward had had some of the same attention to the development issues in your ward as we're providing to these folks here in this ward. And I certainly appreciate that and your efforts to try to make Davenport the great city that it is. I can only suppose that were this happening in 4th Ward, that you would be out there for your residents as well, doing what I'm doing this evening, which is supporting the people who live in that neighborhood, the people of my ward, and also the people of Davenport. So let me just say who it is that I am representing. Certainly, the people in Jersey Farms, those folks have a vested interest in what happened. As has been discussed already tonight, in 2014, there was an agreement made for 22 acres immediately in the southwest of Elmore, and as it makes the turn, that one size did not fit all, and that the lack of any ordinance for height limitations in the Elmore Corners area needed to be adjusted. Those folks that live in Jersey Farms needed to have some consideration in terms of what happened next to them. So the council in 2014 approved a resolution saying that this area up here, this 22 acres, is going to be a 50-foot limitation in consideration for the folks that live in the residences there in Jersey Farms. What I contend is that this area east of Prairie, Pheasant Creek, and Elmore is a transitional area, and that is borne out by the Elmore Corners concept, that we're going to treat this area differently than others. And so I think, you know, compromise is sometimes considered a dirty word. It's not. We all compromise. Fact is, we have a planning and zoning commission, and their job is about compromise. So we do this all the time. You know, I think of 53rd Street, not so long ago was a gravel road. It's not a gravel road now. It never will be again. We've made some changes in terms of how we look at that and how we zone it. It's interesting, perhaps 20 years ago, there was a guy named Bob McGivern who sat in this chair that I'm in now. The thought at that time was that this was agricultural land out there, and we're going to put residential right up to that border of Elmore. So compromises have been made over time. And I wished I'd had the forethought to have Joe's metaphor about Solomon, because that's exactly right. There's an appropriate measure of compromise. In this case, with the elevation changes, with the proximity not only of Jersey Farms, as I've said in the past, this council is also responsible, in my consideration, for the 64 housing units that are going in down here adjacent to Parcel A. Now, those homes aren't built yet. There are people, though, who will be coming to Davenport. We want to welcome people to Davenport. But surprising them with something like this, that they have a deed restriction on the ability to oppose anything in terms of zoning changes with this council, they have, they will have had to agree to that, I think recognizes the fact that we, as a council here, have a responsibility to those future 64 residents as well. So I'm looking at the Jersey Farms folks. I'm looking at advanced homes. We have a responsibility to those people and those residents. And I guess further than that, you know, pertaining to the great city that Davenport is, we have a responsibility to the residents of this town, because I've heard, and we've heard many times from this podium here, about people who say, you know, you said one thing, and now you're switching it on me. You're doing something else. We know that there is an adoptive process and that reasonable compromise is acceptable. I would put in front of you that 80-foot, 120-foot is not acceptable. 55-foot is transitional. 80-foot is not transitional. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give everyone one shot before we go back to the second round. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been very quiet through all of these, the considerations for this, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. In my own old beat-up neighborhood, which it looks very different from yours, we did go through the zoning code when it came forward, and we found things that we didn't like, and we were able to bring them forward to staff and say, we don't think this fits our neighborhood. But I know that not every neighborhood was able to do that. And had we not done that, then we would have had some things in our neighborhood that we would not have been happy with, and we would be here asking for changes. And this zoning code that we adopted, you know, when it was adopted, we knew that it wasn't perfect, and we knew that it would require changes again. So I certainly understand and support, you know, what planning has brought forth to us, and I do support this amendment. I think that also the idea of introducing yet another compromise height into this area, which has been carefully planned, doesn't make any sense. I think it could create nightmares going forward as other proposals come. How about 75 feet? How about 86 feet? You know, so it just doesn't seem to me that with a new plan like this, and that we knew had some errors that needed changing, and this is definitely an error. I don't think we want to zone by mistake. And so I do support the amendment, or I do support the ordinance as it stands tonight, and the promise that's been made to this neighborhood over the years about what will happen, and their willingness to compromise in, back, you know, five years ago, in terms of commercial development, there has been compromise here. So I think this, supporting the 55 feet is, you know, where I am tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was wondering if legal counsel could just kind of go over really quick what potential liability we would have if we were to spot zone this?
Well, what would happen is someone would take it to work, challenge it as spot zoning. The consequences would simply be that that portion, or if it were amended for this parcel, that that height limitation change would be struck down by the courts.
But that is something that would cost us resources of some variety.
It'll cost us resources, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor, for another opportunity. First off, Rich has been a great alderman for the neighborhood, and, you know, your new alderman's going to have some big shoes to fill. So, you know, you've been fortunate. Rich has worked really hard, and, you know, I appreciate all this, appreciate all his efforts. So now I want to move to amend this proposed ordinance to raise the height limit to 73 feet for parcel Y-0801-02A owned by VTS Farm Parcel LLC. And I don't believe this is part, spot zoning, so... Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I anticipate it's going to split, so you'll want to roll call. You're going to have a split vote, so I roll call.
Yeah, we're going to do a roll call. Roll call, please.
Dickman.
No.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
No.
McGinnis.
No.
Kuhl.
No.
Mattson.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
No.
And Rossen. Two yeses and eight nos, Your Honor.
That does not pass. So we're going to move on with our vote on the ordinance as originally projected. So will the clerk again? Brian, would you call the roll?
Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
And Kuhl.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
And that ordinance is adopted. We have a second consideration tonight, ordinance amending various titles, chapters, and sections of Davenport municipal code related to outdated references to the old zoning ordinance. Is there any public with comment on this issue? Seeing no one, will an alderman move the second consideration of the ordinance? It's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, sorry. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, after what we just went through, has staff reached out to the community and the developers, so everybody is aware of this change? You got a lot of faith there.
I see a nod of assent coming from our community planning and economic development person. Any other questions from all of them? Bruce, come on up, please.
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. To my knowledge, I know CPED staff worked closely with Public Works staff, because this ordinance is changing several things in several different code sections as a result of the new zoning code. So for example, I know that we had some conversations with developers about some of the sections related to the subdivision part of the code. So I would, I don't know how extensive it was with every single component, but I know that there was some outreach to folks and some further tweaks made.
Bruce, it's hard work to be good communicators and be transparent. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just along those same lines, last week, when there was a motion to suspend the rules and pass on an earlier consideration, typically, I'm the only nay vote on those, but I do think, you know, what Alderman Ambrose just said raises a good point, that, you know, we ought to be allowing the full six weeks for these considerations. We shouldn't be moving, there's no reason to move them earlier. I mean, we already voted last week to do that, but that's kind of the why behind what I do, is you need to give everyone an opportunity. We have three cycles for a reason, so that somebody can come in in the third cycle and still have their opportunity to voice their support or their objection.
Seeing no other questions, roll call, please.
Dunn.
No.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Mattson.
No.
And Dunn.
No.
Seven yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
Okay, the rules are now suspended.
It doesn't pass, Your Honor. It needed eight.
I'm sorry. Okay?
So we're done.
So therefore, we will, the rules are suspended, but we do not have, they're not suspended. I'm sorry. Rules are not suspended, so therefore, we go on to next week. Great, okay. So we've passed it on to third consideration, but we'll vote on third consideration beginning next week. Okay? Now, is there a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda? It's renewed and seconded. Roll call, please.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
And Condon.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none, is there any public with business? And remember, this is a listening session. Since this wasn't on the agenda, we will listen to this topic, whatever it may be. Anybody from the public who wants to talk on this, on any item?
Good evening again. I'm Rusty Hunter-Zuber, resident of the 6th Ward. And I know it's getting late, and we all want to head home. I know I do. But I just want to spend a few minutes giving you a bigger picture and maybe different perspective on the prior discussion we had regarding zoning. And if you want to put a title on this topic, it's "Is Zoning the Answer?" And my comments are made simply to encourage us to ensure we are doing what is best for Davenport in the longer term. And this is prompted by, in my travels, I often am intrigued when I see signs in certain communities that say, "Zoning does not solve problems, it creates them." And I'm intrigued by that. And what was interesting, about a month ago, I had the opportunity to spend over a week in a thriving economic community that has no zoning ordinances. So, I mean, having seen what we go through, it really intrigued me, how do they do this? Now, they do clearly have building codes regarding structure, for safety, for health, for access. So it's not the Wild West. They just don't have zoning like we do. And through discussions with residents and observations, it amazed me how well their development seemed to be working. It appears as consistent for land use as we see in the city of Davenport. And the teachable point to me was that the market economics of development determine what is built where. And the residents are satisfied for three reasons. One, economics drive land values with no regulatory constraints. What a developer is willing to pay sets the market, whatever the use. There are no administrative costs developing and maintaining a zoning ordinance, and all of the time and cost and effort debating variances and changes with respect to economics. And interesting, most important, is the residents are not disappointed, because reality is, there is no expectation that you're going to protect my neighborhood, or you're going to prevent this or that. The economics prevail. So as I stated, my comments are not saying that we are necessarily doing it wrong, just that we need to keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Brian, will you decriminalize Davenport? So here we are again. The Civil Rights Commission just can't be left alone for some reason. I don't know why. You know, the mayor's already under investigation for the last time that he illegally appointed people, and now he's doing it again, and everybody just voted yes. It's just, it amazes me how this just happens, and nobody says nothing about it except Ray Ambrose. Thank you, Ray, for saying something. I appreciate it. Ray Ambrose, who would have thought? Not me, certainly. Anyway, so on this new document that's going to be, you know, with the people on it that are getting appointed or everything, how are we going to know that all the signatures on it are from the people that actually did it, and they said that they wanted it done? It wasn't last time. Why would it be this time? I don't know. Doesn't make any sense. These appointments were out without any process or anything, didn't ask the public opinion on it or anything, weren't transparent at all about it. You just said, hey, these are the people. That's it. Go to the next Civil Rights Commission meeting. I've been to about the last six or eight, haven't seen any of you at all. None of you. But yet, you sit here and vote yes every time it comes up, just yes, yes. Why not go and see what's going on, then vote? So the other day, I read a story, and it said that out of the nine cities that are measured for things like ordinance on zoning, or I mean, for, let me see, for laws, policies, benefits, and services that are inclusive to the LGBTQ community, that's how you say that, by the way, they, Davenport ranks seventh out of nine cities in Iowa that are rated on that. Seventh out of nine. And right here today, your vote on the Civil Rights Commission, and then your following vote on the zoning thing, tells us why we're seven out of nine, I guess, huh?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dan Foley, 4th Ward. I had a few things I wanted to say about the Civil Rights Commission also. The whole thing is very confusing. I've lost track of which appointees are which anymore. There's been so much turnover and confusion around it, and I pay attention to this more than most people, and if I can't keep track of it, I don't know how other people can. It's unclear how these new, this latest round of appointees are legitimate versus the previous one. I mean, we can say, oh, the processes were followed this time. I've lost track of which appointees are which anymore. There's been so much turnover and confusion around it. And I pay attention to this more than most people, and if I can't keep track of it, I don't know how other people can. It's unclear how these new, this latest round of appointees are legitimate versus the previous one. I mean, we can say, oh, the processes were followed this time. Well, how? We don't know how they, you know, there's no visibility to what was done this time around, or last time around, for that matter. The zoning changes that were talked about, those have to be read three times, spread over different meetings. But when this happens, when we appoint people to the Civil Rights Commission, by the time we read about it in the newspaper, it's already done. Just zero input from anybody. It's already over and done. Just no input from the public at all. The previous set of appointees was contested, and we never really heard what the resolution to that was. I assume that we're saying it was probably, they probably were not legitimate, because now we're redoing this again. But it would have been nice to have some kind of official say, yes, the process was followed, or no, it was not followed, and this is where the mistakes were made, so that we can move forward and avoid this in the future. The timing of these appointees is very odd. We just had an election. There were, this was an election issue, actually. There were people that voted for the new city council based on this issue, and that just doesn't mean anything evidently. We're just going to ignore that. There was, some people treated it almost as a referendum on this particular issue, and that's just being straight up ignored. And I guess the last thing was, again, it would be nice to get a little more input from the public on who gets selected for these names. Again, by the time we read about it in the paper, it's already over and done with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there any other reports to city officials this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Adjourn.